Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it. This is a great crowd for a Monday night. I know there's other places you could have been, but the fact that you took the time to come out and hear about our first 100 days in Congress and ask any questions that you have, I really appreciate. And I wanted to just start by telling you some of the great things that we've done in the first 100 days. And we're going to open it up for questions and talk about anything that you want to talk about. But the main message I want you to take home with you tonight is you have gotten the change that you voted for this past November. Unlike previous Congresses who start their session by swearing themselves in and then taking a month off in January, we started right from the very first day passing substantive, comprehensive legislation. We voted to take the money out of politics and do away with the gifts and the travel and the golf outings and the meals from the special interests and the lobbyists. Those are now against the House rules for the first time in a very long time. We voted, very importantly, to return to pay-as-you-go budget scoring, which is quite simply what we all do on our own home checkbook. You have to have money on one side of the ledger to pay for it on the other. We all have to operate within a balanced budget. Why shouldn't the federal government have to do the same? Now, we're not going to be able to dig ourselves out of the hole that they dug us in the past six years overnight, but we have passed a five-year budget that returns us into surplus for the first time since the year 2000. And that's going to take a great step towards restoring fiscal responsibility to Washington, something that has been missing over the past six years when previous Congresses and this administration added $3 trillion of debt to our national debt and more than a trillion of foreign-held debt. And in fact, President Bush, in just his six years in office, added more in foreign-held debt than his previous 42 predecessors did combined in 230 years. So that shows you that we need a change on the fiscal side in Washington. We voted on the -- that was all in the very first day. We voted in the next week, the very first full week. We voted to implement the Commission's recommendations of the 9/11 Commission to help our homeland security, make us safer at home. It was inexcusable that we had to wait four years since the finish of the Commission before we implemented that. We voted to raise the minimum wage for the first time in 10 years. Now, is there anyone else in the country who could say that they haven't gotten a cost-of-living adjustment in the past 10 years? No other group. Well, we voted to raise the minimum wage. We voted to cut the price of prescription drugs under Medicare. For those of you that are in Part D, we voted to give Medicare the right to negotiate group discounts on your behalf. Right now, you're looked at as an individual, so whatever your drug issues are, your prescription drugs, they look at you as sick as you are or whatever your case may be, and they just jack up your rates. The sicker you get, the higher your costs go. But what we've done is allow Medicare the right to negotiate on behalf of the 40 million people on Medicare, so that instead of you being all alone by yourself in front of the pharmaceutical company, you're with a pool of 40 million Americans, which could cut the price of prescription drugs in half. Now, the President has said he's going to veto that legislation, and when you think about his history with the big pharmaceutical companies, that maybe shouldn't surprise you, but we did make that vote, and we're going to fight him on that, to cut the price in half. We voted to cut the cost of student loans and the interest rate in half. The interest rate on student loans currently is 6.8%. We voted to cut it to 3.4%, which would save the average college student $5,000 over the lifetime of their loan. Again, this is all that very first week. We voted to take the $3 billion in subsidies, taxpayer money, our money, that the previous Congress gave away to the big oil industry at a time when they were making all-time record profits, and reallocate that $3 billion to the alternative sources of energy and research and development in every other possible type and get us off of our addiction to oil. And we're going to study, and I don't know what the answer is going to be, but we're going to fund the research to see if it's clean burning coal, hydrogen, nuclear, wind, solar, air, whatever. We're going to fund it, and we're not going to continue to give the big oil companies the money at a time when they're making all-time record profits. We did vote, and we can certainly have a discussion about this, with regard to Iraq, to put a timeline on our involvement in Iraq. Now, this is the combat forces that would have to be out by March of next year, 2008. Now, that's not to say that we still couldn't have training forces as recommended by the Iraq Study Group, and this coincides with what they did recommend, but our combat forces would come to conclusion by March of next year. We voted on that budget that I told you about, that is, for the first time, going to achieve balance. And within that budget and within that Iraq bill that I talked about, we had the highest ever increase in veterans' health care funding in the history of the country. And that's why I wanted to have this town hall meeting here tonight in the American Legion, because there is no group that should stand in front of this nation's veterans when it comes time to make funding decisions from the federal government. And I strongly believe that, and that's my number-one issue. When I talked about my priorities before the House Budget Committee, we were all asked to do it. I told them my number-one priority was to make sure our nation's veterans, after years and years and years of chronic underfunding, that our nation's veterans got what they were promised and what they deserve. So three times in the first 100 days, we voted to increase funding for veterans' health care. We did it in the budget itself, we did it in the Iraq Bill, and we did it in the fiscal 2007 budget, which we had to deal with in this Congress because the previous Congress did not complete their work. So when you hear other people arguing about our budget that we passed, keep in mind the fact that last year's Congress didn't even pass a budget. They didn't complete the budget, didn't pass it, and they left nine of the 11 appropriations bills, including the VAs, undone. They lost the elections, they didn't like the outcome, so they went home, and they left that work to us. And we responded by, in that bill, increasing funding for the VA by $3.5 billion. We then increased it by another $3.5 billion in the first Iraq Bill and by $6.5 billion in the 2008 budget. So these are substantial increases. And then lastly, and I'll leave it at this and then take some questions, we passed a bill that has languished in Congress for many years and gotten no support in the previous Congresses, that allows organized labor to collectively organize in a more strong way and gives them their rights, because in the past employers have been able to strong-arm employees who are thinking about unionizing. And this would allow, when there's a majority of people who sign a card saying they want to form a union, it would allow the union to be formed, and it wouldn't allow the employers to then come in and coerce and threaten, which is what happens in the past. So we're going to help with the minimum wage, and we're going to help with the ability to collectively bargain without the threat of coercion. And then I'd also mention on that, the foreign trade agreements are going to be coming up in the future here, probably over the summer, and I think we are going to, for the first time in a very long time, take a look at doing free, fair trade instead of free trade, because we've given away the store with these trade agreements over the past 15 years. With regard to NAFTA, the country as a whole has lost 3 million jobs since the North American Free Trade Agreement passed in 1993. And just since the year 2000, the state of Pennsylvania has lost 240,000 manufacturing jobs, just manufacturing, which is about 25% of all the manufacturing jobs that existed at that time, just since the year 2000. So we're going to take a different look at these trade agreements and make sure that when we deal with these countries, we're not giving away the store, and we're going to have them at least make an attempt to come into compliance with American labor law, workers' rights standards, environmental regulations, and that's something that has not happened in the past. So that's in the future, and I will leave it here for questions. Now, I think the -- where we're going to go --
Yes. Congressman, your first question is from Mike Alley.
Okay. I'm glad to see you there. Congratulations. We worked hard for it, and I'm proud to see you here. I'm glad that you're setting a date for the withdrawal of all the troops from Iraq. The Constitution states that Congress declares war. They can also undeclare a war. We're made to believe that the President has the ultimate power from the beginning to the end. He is under the power of Congress also, and we don't seem to understand that. How do you feel about dialogue between Syria, between this country and Syria and Iran? That's my question.
I think it's a mistake to not engage everybody in the Middle East in conversation, and I think the criticism that Speaker Pelosi has taken is unfair from the perspective that just because the President has made a decision that the best way to deal with countries that he views as adversaries is to ignore them, doesn't mean that we, as a Congress, have a right to abdicate our responsibility to conduct affairs in a way that we're going to engage everyone in a dialogue, because it doesn't hurt to have a conversation and see where there's examples of where you can work together and there's going to be examples of where you're going to have to agree to disagree. But there's no reason to ignore people, especially in that region.
Our next question is from Mr. Carl Castellani of Elwood City. I'd like to ask your question.
Congressman Almeyer, do you believe that our nation has a special responsibility to provide the highest quality health care and benefits to our veterans? We should be honoring veterans, not robbing them.
I do, but as I said, that is my number-one priority. We have a Congress over the past six years that chronically underfunded the Veterans' Administration, and we have a President that, within his annual budgets, he adds co-payments and deductibles and increases the fees to access your prescription drug plan through the VA. We did away with all of those ideas when we passed our budget. And as I said, this year's budget has a $6.6 billion increase in funding for veterans' health care on top of the $7 billion in funding that we had already put in in those two previous bills. And as I said, there's no group in my mind that should stand in front of our nation's veterans when it comes time to make federal funding decisions. And you have a lot of support in Congress, but I can guarantee you that there's no one in Congress who's going to work harder for veterans' health care to make sure you get the benefits that you earn and you deserve than me.
Congressman, your next question is from Tom Black of New Bedford.
I don't think I can take my -- again, I'll reiterate, Mike, and say it's glad -- we're glad to have you here and glad that you serve. I think it would be nice if you would tell us what other committees you serve and what, if any, other major priorities you have besides that.
Question is, the committees that I serve on and some of my personal priorities. I serve on the Transportation Committee, which is very important to Lawrence County because it deals with aviation, which is the airport, it deals with highways, which you deal with every day, it deals with waterways, and it deals with rail. So we have every possible form of transportation. I got on the Transportation Committee specifically because Western Pennsylvania did not have a representative from this area, and I do plan on bringing a lot of that support back here to Lawrence County, especially with the redesignation of I-376 and 60 and 422 and all the issues there. So that's why I got on Transportation. I'm also on education and labor, labor we've talked about, that has health care within its jurisdiction as a benefit, as an HR benefit. It has the labor issues, workforce issues within its jurisdiction, and education is something I'm deeply committed to and passionate about myself. We, this year, are going to reauthorize the Head Start Program, early childhood education, the No Child Left Behind Act, which you've all heard about, and I've been meeting with school administrators and teachers all across the district to learn more about their concerns, and I have yet to meet anyone who likes No Child Left Behind, and we're going to work hard to reform it. And then the Higher Education Reauthorization, that reduction in the cost of student loans that I told you about flowed through that committee, and higher education is something I'm deeply committed to as well. And my third committee is small business. That's something that's very important here to Lawrence County as well. I'm chairman of a subcommittee on small business, Oversight and Investigation, and then my other subcommittee is health care. So we're working hard on all three of those committees. I would mention that we just talked about last week, a bill that I had introduced that says if you call an American business and your call is redirected overseas to a call center in India or some other foreign country, the person on the other end of the line has to say what country they're in. Very simple, doesn't add any other restrictions or burdens on the employer, just simply says, like country of origin labeling on a T-shirt, you, as a consumer, have a right to know where your call has been redirected to without your knowledge. And that does two things. It'll give an awareness to the general public of how many jobs we've lost that have been outsourced overseas to these call centers, but more importantly, it'll give you, as the consumer, the knowledge that when they ask you for your credit card number or your social security or PIN number, you have the ability to hang up the phone and say you don't want to continue with that transaction, because a lot of those countries don't have to abide by American law with regard to personal privacy protection. And you have every right to know if you're being asked to give that information to somebody overseas. So that's one of the bills. And another bill that I'm working on, which we've been guaranteed will come to the House floor for a vote, and I'm very confident it's going to pass, is we do away with a late enrollment fee for Medicare prescription drugs, Part D. Many of you -- many of you who are in that program know that the reason they put that penalty phase on there is because they were worried nobody was going to sign up for the program. You had 60 different plans to choose from in Pennsylvania. If you had prescription drugs that you were on in the spouse, and you had to figure out which of those 60 plans was best for you, and then your health status changes, and you've got to go back to the drawing board, and you're given an incentive to get in a plan without doing the necessary research and without figuring out which is best for you, they wanted in the election year to have as big a group in that plan as possible so they could point to it as a success. But the problem is, if you miss that deadline, you're penalized 1% of the average premium per month, every month that you miss, for the rest of your life. Now, if you wait two years to get into the program, maybe you're healthy today, and you wait two years before you decide to enter the prescription drug program, that's 24 months, that's a 24% penalty that you're going to pay every single month on your Part D premiums for the rest of the time you're in Medicare. And that's unfair. So I've introduced a bill to do away with that. We're going to have a hearing on it in May, and we're going to bring it to the floor later in the summer, and I'm confident it's going to pass, and we're going to do away with that penalty.
Our next question is from Dave Aitken from Hookstown.
Okay, what I would propose, to save energy, create jobs in Pennsylvania, would be to electrify the former main line at a Pency from Harrisburg to Conway, work with people in Ohio to possibly electrify it all the way to Toledo, maybe into Elkhart, Indiana. We have the General Electric Company in Erie that makes electric locomotives. We have coal. We could develop the clean coal technology, and if we don't do it in Pennsylvania, perhaps some other state that has a good east-west corridor would do it, and we'd lose what few jobs we have left.
I completely agree that our railways are underutilized, and we do need to find a way to get them going again, not only for passenger transportation, but for rail cargo as well. So I'd like to talk with you more about that. Maybe we can sit down and talk about that. But I would say that that's something that I understand the need for, and I'm pushing very hard, because we do need to take advantage of the fact that here in Western Pennsylvania, we do have all these railways that are coming through here, and they're greatly underutilized.
Your next call is from Jack Kirkwood of Normal State.
I just had a call. I just wanted to tell you what we're doing.
Thank you.
And really appreciate it. And I hope you're doing some good work. And he is out of Iowa.
Thank you. His microphone wasn't working, but I hope you all heard that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Our next question is from Dave Simo. Dave, where are you?
Well, you pretty well answered my question initially when you gave your introduction there, but what I wanted to know, on June 30th of this year, NAFTA Fast Track expires, and I just was curious where you stood on as far as modifying that and so on. So that pretty well takes care of that. But there's another thing as well. Not too many people are aware of this, and I'm sure you are, but this is something that's been floating around in some of the news channels, more obscure and so on, like CNN, and I've seen it in USA Today, but the Council on Foreign Relations Task Force is basically proposing wiping out all of our borders as far as Canada and Mexico and basically just making it like one huge economic free trade zone. And I was just wondering where you stood on that, if you knew anything about that or if you plan on, you know, fighting that or whatever, but they just plan on totally just making this one big country, one society, and just bringing us down to their level.
On the Fast Track that you issued, that applies not only to NAFTA but to all trade agreements, and what that does is give the President the authority to negotiate a trade agreement with absolutely no role whatsoever for Congress, therefore all of you and your elected representatives. And then the President brings that agreement to the Congress for an up or down vote, no chance for amendment or changing anything, and that's what's led to these bad deals that we've gotten over the past several years that have cost us hundred thousands of jobs in Pennsylvania and millions across the country. So Fast Track expires on June 30th, and we, as a Congress, I'm certainly not going to vote for it, but I can guarantee you, as a Congress, we're not going to give the President that authority again. That's just, that's a nonstarter. With regard to your Council on Foreign Relations question, I've heard things like that, and there are differences of opinion on trade. There are people, you know, who've conducted these trade agreements in the past that want to increase our ability to have these free trade agreements and loosen the barriers even more than they're already loosened. But again, that's something that this Congress is going to have no part of. And on the Transportation Committee, part of what you're talking about is the Mexican trucking standards coming up, and we did have a hearing to bring the Secretary of Transportation in front of us. She has an idea that she wants to not quite eliminate the border, but loosen it up greatly to allow these Mexican trucks to come up through here, and their drivers don't have to abide by American law. The trucking standards are different coming up from Mexico. And equally important, they're going to be bringing up goods that were manufactured in Mexico and the Latin American countries in a more free and clear way. So on the Transportation Committee, we're going to make sure that we don't go along with that. But larger in scope, as I said, those trade agreements are, we're going to take a much different look at them than the previous Congresses did.
Congressman, your next question is from Douglas Bell of Newcastle.
Congressman, Tim Ryan in Ohio is after some money to dredge the Mahoning River. And a river makes the fever. And an environmental question is, would you try to get some money, a feasibility study, to try to clean the river? Because we have mills that are gone, and they're just leaching into the river, and it's, it could be an asset, and the dredging could be a lot of work for operating engineers and truck drivers and, you know, and things like that.
Thank you. And I would certainly help with a project like that. I agree with the need for it. I would have to work with the Lawrence County and Newcastle leadership to make sure that that's high on their priority list and what they want me to be working on, and I do have conversations with them on a regular basis. That is something I would want to work with Tim Ryan on. You mentioned Congressman Ryan, who represents the Youngstown area, and he is a young guy like myself. He's somebody that I've gotten to know pretty well in my short time in Congress, and I could definitely work with him on that. You're lucky, in the Youngstown side, Tim Ryan's on the Appropriations Committee now, so he's in position to come through in a way that he hasn't been in the past, because he just got promoted up to the Appropriations Committee.
Our next --
They think that's fair. They've got to be able to do it here. Or before we --
Oh, I'll work, I'll work with him. I will work with Congressman Ryan. As I said, I just want to make sure that what I'm doing is consistent with what the leadership in the county and the city want me to be doing here.
Our next question is from Cassidy Luquette of Newcastle. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
I'm good. As you know, if you pumped your gas, you'd know that it's pretty outrageous. And if a price freeze can be placed on the gas to allow people to catch up, when would that be instated? And prior to the election, I was under the assumption that investigations were going to go on to the profits that these oil companies were gaining. When is that going to be done as well?
That's, she's asking about the gas prices. That's another thing that we did when we talked about removing the subsidies from the big oil companies, is we did put investigative authority on for price gouging, not only at the local level, but I think the big oil companies especially are at fault for these types of increases. And if you look at the increases that we're having right now, they're not due to any shortage around the world, they're not due to any sort of Katrina-type catastrophe that's happened recently, they're just going up because they can. And unfortunately, under the current system with little-to-no oversight over the big oil industry, that is going to continue until we take charge in a way that you're describing, where we do go in and look at whether or not they're gouging the consumer. And we are going to have hearings and oversight and look into that. With summer driving season coming up, we would expect it to go up, but not 30 cents over a two-week period, which is what's happening now.
The next question is from Mary Kathy Zanobi of Newcastle.
Congressman Almeyer, mine is more a concern rather than a question. It's a concern for survivor benefits for my mother. We have been trying for the last four years to get benefits for her as a survivor of a World War II vet, and we seem to be getting nowhere. She has been denied. On my card, you will read the various reasons that they're giving, and my question, I guess, is, if we get no satisfaction, like we've been, from the VA, to whom can I turn to try to get the benefits that she is due as a survivor?
Well, you could turn to me, and you've taken the first step in doing that. We are, as I think I said, we're going to have an office here in this building open every Friday, beginning this Friday. Friday, is it eight to four?
Nine to four.
Nine to four, every Friday. I'll have a caseworker here, one of the people who's in this room, and we can deal with specific cases. I mean, I'd have to learn more about your specific case that you're talking about with the survivorship, but that's what we're here for. We have caseworkers whose only job it is is to deal with the agencies in a way that's going to take care of this situation for you. And I can't guarantee the end result, but I can guarantee you, we'll do everything in our power to make sure you get satisfaction. And that goes for anybody here. You can come see us on Friday in this building, or you can call our office at any time, and we'll get right to work on it as soon as we put you in front of a caseworker.
Our next question is from Omar Abdul.
Welcome, Mr. Congressman. You kind of touched on my thoughts, but I would just like to publicly recognize and say thanks to you for, I guess, having the great vision and even better sense to vote to rein in this administration's adventurism in the Middle East. We're losing now way over 3,200 kids. We've got 300 to 400 billion, a billion a week spent over there. I feel that Nancy Pelosi was right. I think that we need to engage in dialogue, talk with those people who are, quote, "not our enemies." If we did have the chance, perhaps we'd get to know them a little bit better, would break down those barriers of distrust and misunderstanding. And what I guess I'd like to do is to encourage your future support to continue efforts like this, to engage in dialogue and make the world a better place. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and as I said earlier, that -- And as I said earlier, that's exactly the direction I think we should be going. It's been lacking in, in previous years because we had an administration, we still have the administration, who believes that we should just bury our head in the sand and pretend like we can ignore people that he considers adversaries and that's going to somehow make the situation better. And I agree with, with your philosophy that we need to engage these people in dialogue, not just in the Middle East, but around the world, and hopefully come to an understanding on what we can work together on and, and maybe get a little better on the things that we aren't working together on so well.
The next question is from Art Torasio of Wompumpea. Art?
I, I put in a bunch of these things. One thing that was on my mind is genetic patenting. Have you heard of genetic patenting, where they patent one of your genes? And the persons who hold the patent on that particular gene are restricting research by other researchers without paying royalties. And to me, that stifles the research efforts, the initiative. And I was just wondering on how you would stand on that genetic-type patents.
I'd have to learn more about what you're saying. I'm not as familiar as, maybe I should be about that.
Our next question is from John Altman of Newcastle.
Congressman, thank you for coming to Newcastle. It's deeply appreciated. My concern is executive compensation. It just turned out that the CEO of Oxenel Petroleum, $400 million for one year. Now, the gentleman up here was talking about minimum wage. Minimum wage is great. It's not a living wage. There was a bill introduced in 2005. It was the Income Act, Income Equity Act of 2005, HR 3260. That, I think, died in committee. Republicans were totally in power. Is it possible to revisit that? It put a 25 to 1 ratio. That is, if that top executive is getting $100 million a year, that means the lowest-paid guy in that company gets $4 million a year. You don't need a minimum wage if you can enforce a ratio where you're not capping anybody's salary. They can still pay that guy as much as they want, but he doesn't get everything. It's more equitably shared among everybody that works at the company. I understand Barney Frank has one, I believe, that's in committee right now. I don't know where it stands. It was just up for vote, I believe, on HR 1257. That's good. It involves the SEC and preventing that through, through the shareholders, kind of reining it in a bit. I think it's good, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think this older one, 3260, is really what we need and I was hoping that you would consider backing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take a look at that bill. I don't know that ratios are the perfect answer for the problem that you've described, but I totally agree with the problem. We have a larger discrepancy today than we have ever had in not just CEO pay to employee pay, but just generally in the income gap, the, the wealthy versus the people in poverty. The number of people in poverty during the Clinton administration actually decreased by three and a half percent over eight years. The number of people in poverty during the Bush administration has increased by that same percentage over just the past six years. Go ahead, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Let me just say one more thing. I sent a letter to Rick Santorum, to Art and to Specter, and I got a form letter back about minimum wage. I thank God that you're actually here to listen to what I'm saying. Thank you.
I think the solution definitely should include disclosure of these agreements, especially the golden parachutes that you're talking about. You'll recall when ExxonMobil's CEO left a couple of years ago, he got, I believe it was a $400 million one-time payout, which is inexcusable and unacceptable. So we need disclosure. We need to make sure that the public is aware that these things happen. The board is more involved in the decision than just having it to be a bunch of backslappers in a room saying, hey, great job, here's $400 million. They need to have some oversight into the situation. But I'll take a look at the bill. And executive compensation is definitely something that is on the agenda for review. I, I would hesitate to use, you know, just an arbitrary ratio of some sort, but certainly 25 to 1 doesn't sound, you know, too egregious. But I, I would hesitate to go down that road. I would rather do it through disclosure and through just making sure that the income cap, income ratio generally is brought more into line with what it has been in the past. Because if you're doing well right now and you have money in the stock market, then that's great. The economy seems like it's rolling right along. But if you're someone who's living day-to-day and paycheck to paycheck, you don't think the economy's doing so well. And that's the difference between this administration and what we've had in the past, is they point to certain areas of the economy, like the stock market and the wealthy and the, the tax receipts that are coming in from, from the wealthy and say, hey, look how great the economy is. But they're forgetting all about the people on the bottom and our number of people living in poverty continues to go up every single year. And that can't continue.
Next question is from Dick Baer.
Yes, Jason. George Bush just appointed Andrew Briggs, Deputy Commissioner to the Social Security Administration while Congress is...
While Congress is in recess, Briggs is in, in favor of privatizing Social Security, always has been, or even eliminated entirely. Bush's main goal is to turn Social Security over to Wall Street cronies. And I wanted to thank you for coming tonight, too. I've seen more of you in the first four months than I did of Melissa Hart. She wasn't one of my favorite people and I probably wasn't one of hers either. I was just wondering how you felt about Bush doing this and whether Congress can do anything about this appointment.
Recession appointments are not new and they're a way that you're able to game the system. If you know you can't get congressional approval, you wait till the recess before you put them in. And we passed legislation on limiting the terms for US attorneys for recess appointments a couple of weeks ago, given what has happened in recent weeks with US attorneys. But the larger issue that you're talking about with Social Security privatization, I can guarantee you there's no support in Congress to push that. He didn't have the support last time. He certainly doesn't have the support this time. What he wants to do is pull $2 trillion out of the Social Security Trust Fund and ship it to Wall Street so that his buddies can throw it into the stock market. And that sounds great if you're an investor on Wall Street, but if you're someone who relies on Social Security today and certainly somebody who's going to rely on Social Security tomorrow, that's not such a good deal. And it's especially not a good deal for taxpayers who are worried about the federal deficit because that's going to add $2 trillion over the years to the federal deficit as well.
Our next question is from David Yost from Newcastle. Mr. Yost?
This has to do with war veterans, okay? My father fought in World War II. This is for all war veterans, but something a lot of people aren't aware of. My father's been in a home for a little over three years, okay? He's a World War II veteran. They took everything he had, all the money he saved in his life, his Social Security pension to keep him in a home because it ain't service-connected. Whether it's service-connected or not, I think everybody in this room will agree with it. These war veterans should be taken care of. They give him $40 a month and he's a war veteran. The legislation has to be passed to stop that. A war veteran should never have to go through that. It just, in fact, as hard as I am, expert in the training for law, I try not to think about my father because I want to cry that the government could do this to a man who fought in the war. And I think everybody here will, a lot of people aren't aware of this, though. And it just, I just hope they pass legislation to take care of these war veterans.
Well, I, you've heard what I said about veterans and I completely agree with what you're saying. If you want us to investigate his specific case, we can certainly do that. And maybe there's some money that he's entitled to that he's not getting that we might be...
He's a war veteran.
I know it, I know it.
If his condition isn't service-connected, they don't take care of it. They take everything he's got.
That's because of the underfunding that's taking place. And we've tried to put more money into the system so they can remedy that situation. But what you said reminds me of something else that I meant to mention. It was two weeks ago today that I toured Walter Reed Military Hospital in Washington and that's the one that you all read about that had the peeling paint and the rodents and the mold on the walls. And these are our kids coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, terribly wounded, the worst possible injuries you can imagine. And they're coming back. They've served our country honorably. Their families made every possible sacrifice so that they can fight for our freedom. And they come back and they're living in substandard conditions and they have to deal with 20 different departments, 20 different forms, eight different people working on their case that aren't communicating with each other and don't even understand the process themselves. And this has been going on for years at Walter Reed, which is supposed to be the premier military hospital in the country. And the questions that we're asking in Congress now are, A, why did it take a Washington Post reporter to expose this problem when Congress knew about it for years and did nothing? And I can guarantee you this, we're going to get to the bottom of that. We're going to find out who's responsible, why it happened, how it happened, and we're going to hold accountable the people who are responsible. But more importantly, we're going to fix the problem. That's the issue for right now. We're going to do a top-to-bottom review of every VA healthcare facility in the country. There's about 150 of them. Every Department of Defense healthcare system in the country. And we're going to find out what the problems are and we're going to fix them now. And we're going to make sure that nothing like what happened at Walter Reed ever happens again.
The next question is from Daniel Mitchell of Newcastle.
Congressman, thanks for taking our questions.
Thank you.
I just want to say something that I just heard you say about our veterans are coming into the VA hospitals and they are getting put on these agencies and they lose their paperwork. They don't know who's seeing who or what representative is representing who. I, I'm a disabled veteran and I just had recent surgery on a service-connected disability. I filed all my paperwork through my county office, through the federal building in Pittsburgh, through the DAV and through the VA. It's been over two months. And under paragraph 30 of the convalescent period for VAs with disabilities, I should be receiving compensation pay for, for my service-connected disability. Every time I call, the guy, "I don't have an answer for you. I don't have an answer for you. Forward me this paper. Forward me this paper." So I said to the man, I says, "Are you not in the same building?" He goes, "Yeah, the VA's right upstairs." "Well, can't you walk it up there?" "I'll walk it up first thing in the morning." But when I get the paper back, he says, "The memo has been sent." He's not walking upstairs. I mean, I called him, just example, I called him today and I said, "Have you heard any good news?" He said, "You can save $45 by switching to GEICO." That was his response to me. Okay? Now, my concern is this. I'm off work for 14 weeks, that's 640 hours of sick time that I have to take. I took a limited pay from my work because I knew, by listening to this man, that I would receive compensation from the VA. It's been two months. I know, you know, what your answer's going to be. But that is a crime, that these people are not taking the time to take these papers and walk upstairs and follow through because we're doing our part. We've done our part. And I think it's time for them to do their part. Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you. And we can help you with that situation, as I described earlier. Work with us and we can get that resolved. And what's frustrating to me in hearing you talk about that is nobody in this room or anywhere should have to go to their member of Congress to get respectful service from the VA health system. And if that's exactly the way they're treating you, then they're treating others the same way. And that's infuriating to me. We'll do our part to help you, but we'll also get to work in trying to figure out who these people are that are treating you this way and doing something about it.
Hello, Congressman. I'd like to tell you about 20 years ago, I was four, about two blocks over in a Newcastle library, talking to one of your predecessors when Rockwell closed the Newcastle. And I asked him then, and I'm asking you now, "Do you have any specific ideas or goals to stop the hemorrhaging of American jobs overseas and to bring some of them back?" And not just saying we're going to make fair trade. These trade policies have been ruining us for 30 years. We need some kind of specifics and ideas from people running our country. It's been 20 years. I haven't seen anything done yet. You have any ideas?
Well, you're exactly right about stopping the hemorrhaging. It's the first thing we have to do. And you do have to address the foreign trade issue to do that. Because those issues go back 20 years and certainly 15 with NAFTA. And we have to change, fundamentally change, the way we look at overseas trade and foreign trade. Because we're doing it in a way now that is to the benefit of the big corporations, allowing them to relocate their operations overseas, outsource those jobs and then re-import into this country. So I, I think that the, addressing the trade is the number one thing we need to do. But looking forward, away from that, the biggest challenge we're going to have is with China. Because China is now competing with this country, not just on the basis of offering a lower workforce and, and a lower cost to produce goods, but they're putting forward goods that are of high quality. They're very savvy about the way they approach their role in the world and their, their market operations. And on the foreign policy side, they're becoming friends with rogue nations, people, as we've talked about, that we don't even talk to. They're going to Iran and Syria and North Korea and Venezuela and Cuba and they're making friends with them and forming allies around the world that is going to be an anti-American block, not just with trade, but with all foreign policy. And we need to step up our dialogue with the Chinese and not pretend like this is the same China from the 1970s because it's not. They're very savvy about what they're doing. Next year, 2008, China is going to put more CO2 into the air, just in China, than we do in the United States. They consume 60% of the world's concrete with their buildings. They're going to host the 2008 Olympics, which they want to use as a showcase. They have the maglev train that goes outside of Shanghai to their airport. They just built the largest dam in the world. There's a lot of things happening in China that we should be looking at and trying to engage them. So looking forward, I think the answer to your question is that's going to be our biggest challenge. And I don't think we're approaching that in the right way right now.
Next question is from George Reese of Elwood City. Is there a question and a comment?
A couple of comments, Congressman. First of all, congratulations for your concern for veterans' healthcare. I would like to recommend, however, that in the budget process, it's been a hit and a miss situation the last several years. And of course, if you get most, if some of the money that you're getting, if you're putting into budget at the current time, why, this will be great. But there's never really been any mandatory budgeting for veterans' care. So I'd like to have you take a look at that situation. And then another situation, how is this money being spent? Maybe you can take a look at the CARES program. It's the Capital Asset Realignment for Enhanced Services Program, which envision greater access to VA healthcare by vets gone unfunded since its inception. Two years from now, it's the CARES program. And finally, why are fewer injured service people coming home from Iraq and Afghanistan receiving lower disability ratings, thus avoiding paying them full military disabled retirement benefits? For instance, nearly 93% of disabled troops are receiving low ratings. The physical evaluation boards of each branch of service rates, anyone under 30% to be sent home with a severance check. Those over 30% qualify for lifelong benefits from DOD with many inconsistencies being present in the rating system. Veterans Affairs Schedule for Rating Disabilities is not even being followed by the Army. It interprets the schedule in different ways, thus engendering further discrepancies. We owe it to our returning wounded to do, to do better. It just seemed to be a hit and a miss, like this gentleman back here, on what they can and cannot get. Sometimes it takes months, if not years, if none at all, that they get their monies due to them. And one other thing, I understand you're being targeted by Republicans during your next election, which is nothing unusual. This Republican will work for you again as long as you continue... This Republican will work for you again as long as you continue the good work that you are doing, as should all veterans, work for you in the next election concerning the good work that you are doing.
Well, thank you for that last comment. On the three issues that you brought up in reverse order, when we looked at the situation at Walter Reed and then we investigated what the complaints were throughout the Department of Defense healthcare system, the number one complaint that returning servicemen and women had was they were unhappy with their percentage disability designation. It was by far number one. So I think there is a problem with the underrepresentation that they're giving with regard to the percentage disability, which does have an impact on that individual for the remainder of their life. So we are taking a look at that, and that is not something that is escaping review at this point. The CARES program, I'll have to look at that. I'm not as familiar with that program. And you say it's gone unfunded, so I'll go back, when I go back to Washington and talk to some people and find out exactly where that is. And then we'll get back with you on the status. And with regard to mandatory funding for the VA, strongly support that. That's something that I'm a big booster of. There are people on Capitol Hill that are pushing for that. I'm on board that we're going to do the best we can to make funding for VA mandatory. And then we won't have to have any of these discussions about how much money are you going to get each year in the VA healthcare system. And in future Congresses, maybe they'll look at underfunding them. But we should never have to balance the budget on the backs of our nation's veterans. It's just that simple. And you, when you, everyone in this room who was in the service, you went in, you were promised healthcare for the rest of your life, and you deserve what you were promised. You put your life on the line, you made every sacrifice, you did what you had to do, and we're letting you down when you come back. And that should not be the case.
Our next question is from John Presner of Newcastle.
Congratulations on your victory, Congressman. Me and my wife voted for you.
Thank you.
Does anybody doing anything about the Social Security, about the notch babies?
Yeah. Quick question.
I've been getting all kinds of letters from Washington, different organizations. They want, they said they're going to get our money back, what we're entitled to, and they want more money from us, so is anybody doing anything about it?
I'm glad you brought that issue up. He's talking about the Social Security notch. And very briefly, what this means is, the Social Security system had a flaw in its calculation when they calculated monthly benefits, and it kind of spun out of control. And people who were born between the year 1917 and 1926, unfortunately, are the people who are in the group immediately after they made the fix. And what happened is, this might be your situation, there's people who worked 45 years right next to somebody, same job, same salary progression every single year, now they live across the street from each other, and one of them's making $200 a month more on their Social Security benefits than the other person, which is completely inexcusable. And as you know, this issue has been in Congress for a very long time and it's been ignored. This is not new to anybody. This was fixed in the early 1980s. You were never given any redress. And I have signed on to the legislation to get the notch, they're called notch babies because they're people who were born 1917 to 1926. But the group that are in that Social Security notch to get you what you deserve. And I'm going to fight for that.
The next question is from Jack from West Pittsburgh.
I have a personal problem. You know, I went through the VA doctor in Pittsburgh. I took two trips down to Pittsburgh, and I get a bill in the mail for $100. And I was thinking it was unjust. As a World War II veteran, I didn't think I should be paying $100 for two trips to Pittsburgh to see a doctor. And I wanted, you said enough about you helping veterans of future, so I think I will come up here on Friday and talk to your one or representatives and see if I can do a [inaudible]. Thank you.
Come up here at 9:00. You can be our very first case. We'll do the ribbon cutting and you can be the first one that we work for. But that's exactly the kind of problem that we can help with, as I said with the others. But thank you for coming tonight, bringing it up.
Our next question is from Mrs. R.D. Smith of Newcastle.
Nice to meet you. Glad to have you here. Hope you do everything that we want you to do. We're connected a lot with the ARP. And I understand that Congress is trying to pass home care for the people who wish to stay in their homes. What is your position on that?
I strongly support giving individuals the choice of staying in their own communities to receive care instead of going to an institution or a rehabilitation center. What the problem is, is our reimbursement system under Medicare and other health insurers is it incentivizes people to make decisions that are, A, not what they want to do, which is stay at home, and B, not cost-effective. Because home and community-based care, as you know, is much more cost-effective than keeping somebody in an institution or rehabilitation center. So I very strongly support changing the reimbursement system to reimburse for home and community-based care at more adequate levels. But just as important, giving people the option and the freedom, if they so choose, to stay at home to receive their treatment, to be able to do so.
The next question is from Dave Aitken from Hoxtown. Dave?
Okay, I have a problem with a lot of this foreign steel. Of course, you know, the steel industry's been wiped out. But I'd like to see something done that would require American-made steel used in federally-funded projects. Now, I realize we're into the mega mills and not into the big mills like we used to be, but it seems to me, just like there's a lot of bridges around here that need repaired and the bridge works are all out of business, there ought to be some way that we could provide an incentive to use American labor and American products that are on projects that are funded by Americans.
That is a great question or statement. I'm glad that you brought it up because the steel industry has been so important to Newcastle, to Lawrence County, to all of western Pennsylvania for so long, and it's something that I'm working very hard on. We talked about China earlier, and one of the things that I mentioned last week when I was with Congressman Ryan, who we were talking about earlier, we had a news conference in Youngstown, and there were four of us, members of Congress there. And we talked about the fact that China is dumping the steel here in this country in a very unfair and disadvantageous way to America. But just as important, they're undervaluing their currency in a way that other countries in the world are not able to do. So we want to make that defined when you manipulate your currency as an unfair trade practices, which is subject to countervailing duties and other remedies that we have in this country. And it's specifically a result of what they're doing in steel. So we do need to compete with the Chinese on that, but we need to do it in a way that's going to help our domestic steel industry, because we do still have a viable domestic steel industry, but we're losing ground every single day to China and other countries. And we need to make the changes that are necessary to allow them to compete.
Clean coal and also nuclear power have a wonderful future, but the technology, especially on the clean coal, is just not quite there yet. We're at a point that if we don't begin to build soon, we're going to fall into a very tough spot. There's a good environmental push to keep the CO2 down, and when you burn coal, you put CO2 into the atmosphere. What are your thoughts on just kind of the overall energy strategy? What are we going to do during that time until we can get clean coal? And also, how do you feel about the nuclear energy industry? Thank you.
Thank you. And with regard to the clean burning coal and the nuclear, like we have at shipping port there and then next door, we have a situation in this country, which you described, where we have not done anything in the last 30 years, and now these plants that were built, their commission is coming up. So we have to make two decisions in this country. One is, what are we going to do with all these plants that we already have? Are we going to move forward with this technology and pursue this as a viable energy alternative for this country in the future? And then B, if we are, are we going to spend the money that's necessary to upgrade these plants, keep them viable, and build new ones across this country? And we haven't built a new nuclear facility for the past 30 years, although there are four in the pipeline in this country. And you have two sides of the coin. You have the environmental side, and that's an issue that we haven't talked about tonight, but it's very much a part of the discussions in Washington. And then you have the energy side. Actually, I guess there's three sides to the coin, because jobs would be the third component of that. But we want to come up with an alternative source of energy, but it has to be clean energy. And clean coal, we're getting there with sequestration technology and the scrubbers. But the scrubbers at that one plant that we're talking about, it's about $1 billion, if you're talking about doing that. So we need to have an energy strategy that we're going to, A, have the funding necessary to help these companies participate, but we have to make a national decision on whether we're willing to go down that road in the future because of the environmental consequences. And I'll say this about my role in Congress, I'm looked at, because I come from southwestern Pennsylvania, and you know all the industrial and manufacturing things are happening here, as someone who has a reasoned voice on the issue. Because everybody agrees we need to have an environmentally conscious effort moving forward. But it's not going to do anybody any good if we tie our manufacturers' hands behind their backs and then we lose those jobs to China and Brazil and India, and they're going to be belching the same CO2 into the air, probably more than we would have, and we lose the jobs, and we lose the economic potential here in the region. That doesn't do anybody any good. You're not getting the environmental help and you're losing the jobs. So we need to have a reasonable look at the environmental consequences of the different types. And as I said earlier, I want to have a national effort where we look at every possible alternative. And clean burning coal and nuclear are certainly part of that. But I want to look at everything. I want to look at hydrogen, I want to look at air and wind and everything under the sun.
The next question is from Dennis Robbins in Newcastle.
Excuse me for not standing.
I understand.
I'd hate to fall over in front of everybody. As far as the international trucking you mentioned earlier, international trade, I did spend 10 years as an over-the-road trucker, and there's really not much of a standard regulation between Mexican trucking, as you mentioned, or Canadian even. And our drivers are held to a higher standard as far as ours or service regulations and really, and licensing and everything. Now, I've dealt with a lot of drivers from other countries that really don't even speak or write English, and barely read it. Is there a way of standardizing those regulations between all three countries?
Well, as I said earlier, that's one of the things in the Transportation Committee that we're working on. The first thing we have to do is stop what the Department of Transportation is trying to do by opening up, especially that southern border, and allowing those Mexican trucks to come up through here. And they don't abide by, as you're saying, any of our safety requirements or driver rest requirements, anything like that.
I guess my point is that Canadians are really just as bad. Whereas you have trucks that are well-maintained coming out of Mexico, the B-trains they bring down out of Canada, they call it B-trains, they're superbies, are just as bad, really. They're better maintained, but they're originally not safe either.
Well, I'll take a look at that. I have not heard much of the complaints coming from the northern border. But now that you've mentioned it, I'll go back and we'll take a look at that. But the general point is that we should have a consistent system where all the trucks that are using the American highway should have the same standards that our trucks have to abide by. I think everybody would agree that's a reasonable approach.
Our next question is from Paul Zerilla of Newcastle.
My question deals with one word, which, incidentally, I've heard uttered among your colleagues. It's a two-part question, and equally important, I'd like your personal comments. Will there be an impeachment? If yes, when? If no, why not?
I wondered what the one word was going to be. I was waiting with anticipation. That's good. Speaker Pelosi does not support pursuing impeachment proceedings against the President, and I think that she's making the right decision. Because the American people voted for a change last November.
Better change?
Well, a couple of things. One is, I'm not real happy with the alternative of the number-two guy stepping up. But I say it somewhat in jest, but the reality is, part of what the American people were so angry about was the bitter partisanship that had been on display throughout the past six years with regard to this Congress. And actually, further back than that, going back into the oversight of President Clinton. And the Speaker does not feel that it would be the best use of the Congress's time, and I listed for you all the things that we've done here in the first 100 days. We would not have been able to do any of that if we were mired in impeachment proceedings and it would be on all the talk radio shows and the TV stations in the country, as it was with President Clinton. And it would just bog down the time of Congress and we wouldn't be able to work on these issues that you're talking about. The President has another year and a half left on his term, a little bit more, and we're making every effort to work with him within the context of voicing our opinion that we need change on Iraq and on energy and homeland security and Medicare and student loans and everything under the sun. But it's, the Speaker doesn't believe that we should have Congress bogged down for months at a time over a partisan impeachment proceeding, because then the American public might say, "Well, Pox on both their houses, they're all the same. These guys came in and the first thing that they did was what we didn't like about the other guys." Go ahead, you follow up.
You can't work with him. He won't listen to you. He's too arrogant. He thinks he knows it all, and he's not paying any attention to you, obviously. The worst president in my lifetime. And all the news media's on him now, same [inaudible].
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I'm not defending the President, not defending his actions, and I'm certainly not going to argue with your status that you're giving him in history. But I do agree that there's a lot of work to be done, and I would much rather focus on healthcare and education and Social Security and Iraq than get mired down in a bitterly partisan impeachment proceeding, especially...
If somebody really got it started, would you support it?
Well, I mean, I'd have to take a look at what the articles were and what they were talking about. I have to take a look at what they were putting in front of me. I wouldn't want to give you a yes or no. But I really believe that we need to move forward and get away from all the partisanship of the past, because I think that's at the heart of why we saw this tidal wave and call for change last November.
The next question is from Randy Shorm. Randy?
Congratulations again for going to Washington and representing us. In the Saturday Beaver County Times, there was a story about you, concerned about the locks and dams on the Upper Ohio River. And it pointed out that you were looking for $4.5 million to do a study. It brought to mind an article I had just read a couple of weeks ago, that China is going to spend the equivalent of $100 billion to build a high-speed rail system in China. And just imagine, they've got, they're spending $100 billion on rail, you're looking for $4.5 million for a study. We could use jobs to rebuild our transportation system. It would create hundreds of thousands of jobs. You said that Congress is going to pay as we go. So that's why you're scrounging around for $4.5 million. My question is, when you voted for the supplemental appropriation for Iraq of $125 billion, which brings us to about $800 billion, is that a pay-as-you-go?
That's a supplemental appropriation, which is not subject to the pay-as-you-go because it's supplemental on last year's budget. As we move forward, because we're still in... As we move forward, because we're still in fiscal year 2007 budget, pay-as-you-go takes effect with our budgets, which we started, which was the 2008 budget. That supplemental was supplemental onto last year's budget.
The future appropriations would be pay-as-you-go?
Everything is subject, yeah, you have to have money on one side to pay for it on the other. And you heard me talk about, I think rail is definitely a big part of our transportation needs going into the future, and we do need to give it the money and the resources. The $4.5 million was specifically for a study on the Upper Ohio with regard to the three locks and dams that we have with Montgomery, Dash Shield, and Emsworth. We're looking for $45 million just for Emsworth. That's actually getting in there and fixing some of the issues with Emsworth. And the long-term prognosis over the next 10 to 20 years is hundreds of millions of dollars to fix each of those three dams. So, yeah, the article talked about one specific request, which we're going to do this year, but in the out-years, it's a hundreds-of-million-dollar project.
My point is, you've got to spend it here, instead of over there.
You're right. I agree.
Our next question is Frank, from Frank Lucetic of Newcastle.
Thank you for being here, and my daughter asked my question already, but we heard a hemorrhaging of jobs. What about the hemorrhaging of our borders? Everybody talks about the illegal aliens will only do the jobs that Americans don't want, when they're averaging $10 an hour, some averaging even more. My question is, what do you feel about penalizing corporations or companies or employers who hire them, knowing they're illegal, with a high fine and jail time? And also, when is someone in Washington going to open up a dictionary and look up the word "illegal"?
This is a debate which you're going to see unfolding very shortly. As we get into the summer, you're going to see the immigration issue come forward. And I'll tell you a little bit about where Congress is and then where I am. The President has proposed amnesty, moving forward on that. He has some support within the Republican Party, but not much, to be honest. Within the Democratic Party, there's a fair number of people that support moving in that direction, especially people from the southwest and from areas like Chicago and New York and Florida. But we, as a Congress, have said that if we're going to move forward on the President's proposal, he has to guarantee at least 70 Republican votes to support his plan, or we're not going to bring his plan up. And we have to know who they are. We want names confirmed votes in advance. Right now, it's hard to say if they have 70 votes. But if they do, and it comes forward, it's going to be a fight. There are people who think that we need to provide some level of amnesty. Now, I'll tell you where I am on that. I absolutely oppose amnesty. There's nobody in Congress who takes a harder line on illegal immigration than I do. I think we need to secure the borders, we need to penalize the employers who are hiring the illegals, as you talked about. These are not jobs that nobody else will do. They're jobs that nobody will do unless they're paid a fair wage, which is what this country's all about. $10 a day is not going to cut it. Like you said, $10 an hour, they're getting paid $10 a day. We need to make sure they don't qualify for any social services, and that goes without saying. And they absolutely should not get to the front of the line when it comes time to apply for citizenship and go through the appropriate ways. They need to go back, if they want to become a citizen, they need to go back home and re-enter this country in the legal way and go through the same process that everybody else goes through who wants to be a legal citizen. And I support making English the official language of the country. So that's where I am, but I will tell you, it's going to be a tough fight. It's going to be close.
Congressman, this is the last question of the formal program. You do have a little bit of time to stay around afterwards. And our question comes from Scott Cartwright in Newcastle, and he served in Iraq.
Thank you for telling us. Yeah, I guess I'm, most people want a withdrawal. A soldier who served there, I don't want. I don't think there should be a withdrawal. Let us do what we need to do. We're working, we're doing things for the schools, we're helping the people. How many times have mothers came to us and we've given their children health care because they knew that, you know what, who else is going to give better care than Americans? We've done so much there. Please do not pull us out. There's a lot of work that needs done. Also, second question is, how can we make the claims process at the VA much more faster and easier for people who have them, as it takes months and months and months for you just to keep on going, going through the same paperwork on whatever injury you say you may have?
Okay, second question first, but first let me say thank you, Scott, for the work that you did over in Iraq. We, on the second part, last, two weeks ago, we passed in Congress what we called the Wounded Warrior Act, which adds a new level of caseworkers and help for people, just like you're talking about. Because what we discovered at Walter Reed and within the Veterans Healthcare System is, there weren't enough non-medical staff onboard to help with the claims processing and the paperwork that you're talking about. And you heard me mention the 20 different people that were involved in some cases in eight different departments. We need to make sure that never happens again. So we've taken a step in that direction of increasing the number of non-medical staff to assist families and servicemen and women and veterans for just that eventuality. The Iraq, and this is a great way to end it, because, I mean, I respect what you've done, I can't thank you enough for what you've done. My view on Iraq is what we've outlined is a strategy for success. If you look at what's happening over there, and you've seen it firsthand, we have only one piece of leverage from the Iraqi government. And it's a government right now that is not really doing anything to help itself. You saw it over there. You're the ones that are over there doing the work. We need to put some leverage on them to take control of their own country and manage their own affairs. And I think, and I opposed the timeline for a long time, but in looking at it, I think the only way we're going to get this done in the way that you describe is if we use the leverage that we have, which is our presence there. And they've been waiting for a very long time for their chance to run the show over there. And you know all the bad things that happened under the previous regime. But the Shia need to understand that our presence over there is not open-ended, and we are not going to be there to hold their hand forever. They have to, at some point, make a decision to administer their own government and run their own affairs. And if we set this date and say, "You have to get your act together by this time, stand up and accept responsibility," because we've had three national elections, we've installed a President and a completed Cabinet and a Parliament, and they should be moving forward, but they're not. They're not making progress on the governmental side. There are good things that are happening that you're responsible for and your comrades. But the government needs some reason to come into the game, and they're not doing that right now. And I think that by adding that step, it's a strategy for success. And we voted to give the troops over there more money than the President asked for. I want to make that clear. This is not about cutting the funding, and Congress is never going to pass a measure when we have troops in the field of battle that's going to reduce the level of funding over there. We're going to keep you safe, we're going to give you the body armor that you need, the Ubarber and Humvees and transportation equipment. That's not what this is about. This is about coming up with a strategy that's going to incentivize the Iraqi government to do what they should be doing anyway, which is stand up and manage their own affairs. I'll hang around for a while. I would like all my staff to stand up and raise their hands so you can see who they are. Okay, they want me to introduce my staff. So, Mike Butler, I'm the District Director. So he's the top guy in the district. He runs the whole show here.
Christina Statham, Communication Director.
Greg.
Greg Mallon.
Angela.
Angela.
She's in the Alquipa office. They don't have microphones, so I'll do it. Beth is, you're going to be working out of our Natrona Heights office, right? And is a caseworker. And then Saron, raise your hand, she's in our Alquipa office. She's going to be the one that deals with our social security predominantly. So those of you that had cases, she's the one you're going to deal with. Dave Wexler, you're also in our Natrona Heights office, right? He's also a caseworker. Kathleen is somebody you all need to know. She's our veterans person. She's a veteran herself and has worked on these issues for many, many years, and we're very lucky to have her, as well as Greg, who's also a longtime veteran himself as well. And then Jennifer Raypatch behind is going to be working out of Alquipa, and she's also a caseworker. Did I leave anybody out? Who's, is it Jennifer that's going to staff this office here on Friday?
It'll be Jim. This Friday it'll be Jennifer, but in the future it'll be Jim.
Well, Jim Ferrucci, who's not here this evening, is who's going to staff this office. He's from Elwood City. So we're going to stay around for a little while. Any cases, you want to talk about any other issues? Thank you all. We can talk after this. Thank you all for being here.